Ten o'clock, so we'll call this meeting order.
Paul Stewart.
Here.
Same as open.
Here, Park.
Item number three is going to be safe relations to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number four is going to be recognized here, so we'll pass out the sign in sheet. Once again, thank everybody for being here. And as we're passing around the sign in sheet, we'll move on down to item number five, which is new business. So we're looking up the floor. Bring everybody else in comments.
Commissioner?
Uh, well, Rick, he does. He's got the bricks down.
Yeah, Rick, the brick look good. We thank you.
Behind the monument. So, uh, it looks very nice. We do have tile that we're going to put up on the third floor, and Aaron gets a chance. And the inmates, uh, they gave us a discount at Stigler Carpet. Put that in, it's got the old part up, but it's real sticky, so we're, uh, got it ready to go. Ron put a door up going into the library. We're going to be changing it up a little bit in the DA's office, uh, on a door, so they can pay at the door. So, in the near future, we've got that going. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
The window guy was here. Of course, look at that. I'm at with him and installing that window in the DA's office. And also, they, uh, remeasured and ordered the material to fix the windows in the third floor. So, since he gets them, we've got to take out those metal frames somebody does from the, uh, in the windows. Embedded in the block, there's an old window frame in there, a little thin metal. It's got to be removed. So, I don't know if that's something trustees can do. Whoever does, we're going to try one, see for sure how it works. Because we're going to have to try to do it without breaking that glass in that window to, if we can get them all out ahead of time. Otherwise, we're going to have to take them and the window out at the same time, which is going to be time consuming, because we're going to have to have somebody outside and inside both, because the glass is falling. Possibly, I don't know how we're going to take the existing windows and glass out without breaking them falling outside. Uh, maybe with a man lift, we might be able to push it to the inside. It's going to be a joint effort on this, because they can't install them. I don't know how long it's going to take to install one versus demo one. And we've got two different parties doing the work, so. As we take one out, they're going to put one back in, but they're going to have them rebuilt. Or they just slide the unit in, but still, yeah, it takes a while to install it and then put the glass in it. They'll build, build the frame, it won't have glass in it, and they'll install the frame. And then they'll have their glass already cut to install after the frame's installed in the opening.
And then we've got, what, three walls?
But then we've got three of them that's blocked in that we've got to get out too. So, all the windows, whether it's block or glass, it's going to be a problem too. Not a big problem demoing them out, it's just a problem for safety because of outside. And we're, basically, I have to have a lift for each one of them.
So, can the commissioner demo out, three of you all, get your people up there and demo it out?
We can try being a look at it, see what we can do.
And then, don't you think it'd be best to just, uh, temporary, just, uh, cut out a piece of plywood and stick in there temporary, and that way, when the man comes, he's set to go?
There'll be nothing to stick it into, that's the problem.
We can, we can attach it to the sidewalls, though.
Oh, you mean just put it on the inside, no?
Right, just on the inside, just attach it, uh, with some concrete screws or something, it's just.
If, it's, it's still a joint effort on time, and if, if they could get their frames built and have them here. But you know how everybody works, when you think somebody's going to show up, and they don't show up, and then if a rainstorm comes or something, they blow in and, uh, around, around that plywood. I don't know, well, yeah, plywood's a good idea, but I don't know how far ahead you can get.
You don't, I mean, he can install in the back?
Or I talk to him about maybe bring, building one, and let's try one and see how fast it's going to go. And see, make sure it's going to work before he builds all of them. Um, those openings are rough materials, they are brick and concrete, they're not true, exact, you know, openings, but we've got to get those frames out of the old original existing welding window.
Does that have to be cut out with a torch?
No, I think we can chisel them out, I think.
Is this going to be covered at a county general?
No, this is going to be all through donations.
Okay, I was going to say, H C C D C doesn't have the funds to do that.
No.
Okay. That's what y'all know.
So, that's where we're at on the windows.
So.
What's research, he finds out, when he can bring one, we'll get, we'll get, we'll look at it, see what we can do, and then have one ready.
I think possibly, if somebody had time sometime, we might look at taking that metal frame out if there, maybe we can take that metal frame out of each one of them without breaking the glass. And get that much done and cleaned up, chiseled out, cleaned, and then, the aluminum window units won't be a problem to get out. Other than the glass breaking and falling outside. Um, the most time consuming is getting the old original metal frame out and chisel that extra cement in there to get the opening true. And without y'all seeing them, you, some of you have, I don't understand what I mean talking about.
We'll look at that.
Tim?
Um, another busy week, we've, I think we made nine arrests for possession with intent possession cases. Helped PD on a search warrant. We've got a couple more search warrants that we're fixing to serve. Call volume's high. Last week, I told you all it was around forty-one hundred, forty-two hundred since January was our total calls of service. I looked at it Friday before I'd left the office, and we were at forty-six hundred. So your average is about five hundred, five hundred calls of service a week. That's, that's a lot of calls. Now, that could be anything from, you know, transports, all, all different things, but, I mean, that's, that's high call volume. Um, inmate counts averaging mid-fifties and mid-sixties. Made a lot of arrests for drugs, I mean, I gotta, you know, continue to stress that, it's, you know, we're seeing, we're seeing an influx. Influx of drug arrests, and it's because it's so readily assessable and so cheap. I will tell you, we've interviewed several, um, several people that's been arrested, trying to find the source of, the source of supply, um, for our area. And everyone, and we'll tell you, folks ain't selling dope in Stigler or Haskell County. So they, you know, guys got a little bit here and there, but nothing big. They're going outside the county because of the success that local law enforcement's been having. So, that's, that's reassuring to know, um, that they're going, they're either going to Eufaula, Longtown, Lealester, or Spiro, Hodo, to, um, to get their, to get their main source of supply. So, it's nice to know that. Other than that, we talked about, you know, the EMS issue with, um, taking, taking excessive amount of time with that inmates down. Also, um, biggest thing, we talked about the previous meeting, this year, it does not look like, unless something bad happens, the sheriffs or the county jail is going to have to request any extra funding for maintenance and operation. Looks like we might actually have carryover on maintenance and operation monies. And that's through cash accounts, not through budget account, uh, which is what we always operate out of anyways. Also, um, looks like we've made it all the way to the end of the year, and we're going to have to request thirty-five hundred dollars for salaries this month, roughly, and then salaries for the month of June. Other than that, the jail's been pretty much self-sufficient on its own, so. That's where we are, we appreciate commissioners and everybody's continued support. Hopefully, we'll have some more report next Monday.
Well, thank you, Tim. Anybody else with any new business?
One other thing, Commissioner, if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
I want to talk about our inmate work crew. And they, they've been doing the ball fields. We've done all the cemeteries up to, up until decoration, we picked up around them, cleaned up cemeteries as much as we could. The roads are cleaned up. Tomorrow, we're going to Tomahawk. I think Sanders' guys were out fixing the road at Tomahawk State Park last week. And tomorrow, we are weeding it, mowing it, and going to have it opened up by Memorial Day weekend. So we, they're working, um, working daily. I know they're mowing the sheriff's office, the courthouse, the EMS building, the ballparks, and picking up trash three to four days a week. So, uh, we picked up Lona Valley, Kenon and Lona Valley last Thursday. So, I mean, they're, they're out working, we try to get the one area, the one area, um, one district a week, or, you know, two, three, and, one, two, and three, one day a week. I know we're talking about doing Kyoto Lanning Road again, uh, the next couple weeks, it's, it's bad again, we've been down. Got all, got all the cemeteries picked up for decoration for Memorial Day.
So, and what we did on, um, the Corps of Engineers, the town of Tomahawk got with them. I had to write a letter stating that we could go help. All they want is something in writing that we would help the park and continue to help it. But we did get it approved, and that's the reason why Tomahawk Park is being done. So, and it looks really nice, they got the roads done, and we even trimmed some trees up that we had to get our equipment through also. So I think the town of Tomahawk's really improved a lot. They had a meeting last week also, but they're, it's looking up for them.
Any more new business? Yes, now we're going to move on to item number six, approved commissioners proceedings from previous meetings.
Yeah, most of them approved.
I second that.
Park. Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, the item number six will be approved, commission proceeding, oh, apologize for that. Item number seven, approved blanket POs. And we have one for fifty-two hundred dollars to Stigler Stone. We have one for six hundred dollars to Fleet Corps out of S J F. We have a thousand dollars to Fleet Corps out of S S F. And then we have a sixteen hundred dollar to Performance Food out of S C A. And those will be the blanket POs for this week.
I'll make a motion on number seven.
I'll second.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
Paul Stewart.
Yes. Okay, item number eight, will be discussed, consider approving monthly report for treasurer's office.
I'll make that motion.
Park makes the motion on item number eight. I'll second it.
Park, I think.
Yes.
Paul Stewart.
Yes.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
And if it's all right with everybody, we'll bypass number nine to ten forty-five. It's just a bit open for the current fire department equipment. So, to maybe help our DA out, we'll move down to item number ten, which discuss and take possible action signing title sixty trust for H C P F A.
All right. So I spoke with the auditor, um, and talked to him about the new possible trust. The concern that I have for you, and my apologies, I called him again this morning on my way up here. He probably forgot he was going to give me a written opinion and hadn't done so yet. And if you'll forgive me, I'm not the greatest graphic artist, but I kind of drew this up to help me.
Okay.
This is sort of, let y'all kind of look at that. The issue really has to do with that quarter cent sales tax, which is passed for, for general maintenance. And I know that Farley and I had, had both given an opinion that the quarter cent sales tax could be used to help pay jail costs out of the general fund. The issue, and what that is supposed to sort of, uh, encapsulate, is how it can be used. In other words, the auditor, the reason they had a problem with the way we're doing it is that they said the quarter cent could not go directly to the jail cost, because it was for general use. However, you could, and that's kind of where the arrows and the lines are the way they are. You could pay whatever out of the general fund, and for easy math, if only a few numbers were this low, but for easy math, say a hundred bucks, out of the general fund towards the jail cost, you could immediately take the exact same amount, that hundred dollars from the quarter cent, move it into the general fund, and then remit from there. But what you couldn't do was take the quarter cent directly to the jail fund. It had to go in through the general first. So with the new, and, and I don't, I think I gave my copy back last week. The concern with the new one was that it, it seemed with the, uh, the Title Sixty Trust, it appears to pledge that quarter cent sales tax, just a question.
It does.
Yeah.
Boy, I read it.
Yeah. That's a question that you brought up last week. See, I'm trying to know which one of those. But, that was the concern I had last week with it, was that quarter cent being pledged into this new, uh, trust. I don't think that we can do that, because we would, we would be, everything we do there is fine as long as it goes in through the general fund, because the, the jail cost can be part of the county's general fund. It just isn't as specific to pay that. Which seems like a lot of kind of fancy lawyering and scheming, and I don't disagree, but that was the auditor's opinion. But to directly pledge it as part of the trust, I think then you've changed the nature of what that tax was passed for, and I don't think you can do that. I was like.
I have a question real quick.
Sure.
Why don't you say that? We, we are all in this room, are very, um, knowledgeable about this quarter cent and half cent that's there.
All more than the animals.
Well, I mean, I'm not going to say that, but, um, my question is, is there's a quarter cent that has been pledged through refinance to this facility. That quarter cent has a mortgage against it on a U C C filing, which was done with the refinance of this facility. My question is, is if it is, if it cannot be used directly to that account, but it can be used through the general fund as a, as a, as a payment op, option, what do we do to get that quarter cent? Un-mortgaged and get the U C C filing off of it? Therefore, if somewhere down the line, there is a, there is a foreclosure on this facility, that they don't automatically come and get the quarter cent that wasn't, wasn't supposed to be pledged to begin with for the facility on the refinance? And if that is true, that it was not able to be pledged at the time, that could possibly change the whole outcome of this refinancing that this quarter cent's been pledged to, and over two hundred thousand dollars in fees have to be utilized to pay for that refinancing. I mean, I think it's, I think it's a ballgame changer in the whole aspect, if it could not be used to begin with, and the bond attorneys and the bank accepted it, knowing that it couldn't be used to begin with.
You asked a question there, about what if, if you make your payments like you pledged to do, then it's not a problem.
But it's still mortgaged.
If you live up to your obligation.
Not disagreeing, but it's still mortgaged.
Well, it is, but you have the money and the funds to change that.
But, Randy, my question is this, is it still mortgaged? If it was unlawful to be done in the first place, why should the county be obligated to pay those, those fees and that high percentage on this refinancing? Because if, if the auditor knows it, the district attorney knows it, the bond attorneys who do this for a living should have known it. I think it frees up money for the K, I'm not saying that we don't make the payment, I, we're all in agreement that you got to make the payment. But I'm, I'm looking at the long term for the county.
I'm saying, do you have the money, the funding, and the legal staff to go after it?
But that goes back to do, we just let them take three hundred thousand dollars?
Well, they've already took it. And since you have made.
They haven't paid it back yet.
And since you have made the payments, you've set precedents.
We haven't, we, we've made the payment because we've been told through mo, through two other letters that it was lawful to do it. Now we're, now we're learning that, hey, this quarter cent shouldn't have been pledged. Therefore, therefore, that, that changes the ballgame on, I, I'm a hundred percent agreeing that we got to make, make the payment. But what I'm looking at is, you got this quarter cent that's mortgaged, you got this quarter cent that's held basically against the county's will. I mean, the, the commissioners agreed to do it, but the voters didn't. So you've got this quarter cent that's got a U C C filing, and the fees, I, I mean, I, I'm not worried about the quarter. I mean, we're going to have to make that payment, I understand that. But the fees that come with that, I mean, we're talking excess of two hundred thousand dollars just in fees.
And the commission defense, and we have our DA here. The county commissioners cannot, and our DA's here, go into a financial obligation for more than one year at a time. So when that was signed, that was only good for one year.
No, it was tied into the bond issue. But it, it was, there, it wasn't a term agreement.
I understand that, Randy. I mean, Rick, I'm sorry, I apologize. I understand that, but the county commissioner can't legally go into any financial obligation for more than one year.
I understand that.
So if it went to court, I mean, I, I understand where Tim's coming from. And I'm with Randy, we have to make the payment. Nobody's arguing that, we have to make the payment. But I think what Tim's saying, we might have a chance of getting that mon, some of that money back. I think that's what you're saying into Tim.
And that's what I'm asking.
Well, if, if I may, I, I think we've got an overlap of law. And what I mean is, we've got criminal law, and we've got tax law, and we have civil law, we have contract law. How to say the word law, man. A bank, when issuing a mortgage, can, can, can use whatever it wants as collateral, does that make sense, to, before they determine to issue it? And, and it really doesn't come out till later in the wash, whether or not they can go collect. And what I mean is, you know, every day between the two counties, uh, we have forfeitures that are filed. And the bank will go repossess the, the property, whatever it is. And then the county has a, a lien for its tax. And by operation of law, that lien trumps in the, in the bankruptcy proceeding, things of that nature, it comes first. And, and so, not to get too far off in the weeds, but the, they can, when the, when a bank looks at loaning with someone, they'll look at whatever it is they want to look at to determine the credit worthiness of that individual or that entity, whatever it may be. But that doesn't necessarily mean that just because the bank attached, I understand what you're saying with the U C C filing, and to be totally honest, I don't fully know the answer to that, I couldn't tell you how that would end. But I'm telling you that it's my belief that the bank can look at whatever it wants to look at to determine the credit worthiness. But that doesn't necessarily dictate it, and I think you're describing, don't blink with words in your mouth, Sheriff, but I think you're describing kind of a worst case scenario, if there was some default, then they couldn't come get that quarter cent. Is that right?
Yeah, my, my worry is, is that two years, three years, four years down the road, the commissioners determine that they can't continue to make that payment. And it's by the vote of the commissioners, and they, they, they choose not to fully make that payment, now you've got this quarter cent tied up, because, I mean, I, I, what do you, I mean, what's your thought, Randy?
I, I guess I.
My thought is, is that you're going after something that you can achieve, for one thing, and second, is that.
So an unlawful.
You've made the obligation, the county's made the obligation.
Not, not saying they haven't, but I'm.
And, and therefore, it has been used as collateral to secure the bonds and the refinance, and it has been, had made payments out of it, which sets the precedence that you acknowledge it. So to go back now and say, well, look, we want our money back, well, what's odds of that, Chuck?
Pretty low.
So, what I'm saying, Tim, is a great idea, and it'd be great if we could get all that funding back. But the thing you're going to have to do is you're going to have to meet your obligations. If you, if for some reason you go into fault, that's when it'll be determined, whether or not it's legal or not.
And, and I, and I'm not disagreeing, but what I'm saying is that quarter cent sits there. If for some reason, the board of county commissioners decide to go into fault at some point, that quarter cent's tied up. If it's not lawful to be used, then it shouldn't be lawful to be pledged. That's just my, that's just my opinion.
I hear what you're saying, but Chuck, my question, excuse me, when we set the budget, could we just set three quarters of a cent back for the jail and be legal, and just budget it right? You know, like when we set the budget, just put it in there right then and be done with it?
Can't avoid the general fund.
I mean, wouldn't that money, it wouldn't come out?
You can, you can set a quarter cent out of the general fund to go to the jail.
That's what I'm saying, when we do the budget.
Half a cent plus the quarter?
Yes.
Well, I don't, hang on, Tim, excuse me, I'm sorry. When you say, see, I don't consider the half a cent, because it never goes in the budget.
Right, the half cent.
The half a cent goes in the G R O account, so to me, when we set the budget, forget the half a cent. Because that has nothing to do with the budget. What I'm saying is a quarter percent, can we, when we set the budget, can we legally take a quarter percent and put it in the budget for this jail?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's, that's all I was wondering.
The, the only hangup was the route.
Well, that's what I'm saying, would that be the proper route?
The, the route is, it's got, the quarter cent has to be set in your budget to come out of your general fund.
Then, yeah, because people keep saying half, the half is irrelevant to me, because it, it never goes into the general fund.
Right, and it, and it doesn't happen.
So, I mean, when, all I'm talking about is the quarter.
Yes. And that's, and that's what they're, they're saying, is you can absolutely use it. Pledge it in your budget if you want, that's fine, it's just has to take.
I wanted to clarify that for the other elected officials and people. They said, when you're taking three quarters of a cent, but no, we're actually just taking a quarter.
Yes, out of the.
You're right, so that's, I just wanted to clarify, there will only be a quarter, not three quarters taken out of the budget.
Yes, out of, out of. Yes, out of, out of the general fund, pray.
Yeah.
Back to Tim's comment about the unlawful pledge. Well, if, if the quarter has got a mortgage on it, UCC fines on it, and it does, is it unlawful to spend it for other uses in the county other than the jail?
I don't believe it is.
Because the, the UCC filing is specifically for the jail payment, right?
It is, it is, but a, a use, and this, I may be going outside an area of expertise that I have. But I will tell you from my opinion, based on my experience, as far as that goes. A UCC filing cannot trump, cannot take precedent or rewrite the tax question on that quarter cent sales tax. So that quarter cent was passed by the voters of the county to be used for, for general county maintenance. And, and it can be pledged through the general fund for the jail, no problem. But a UCC filing can't come in later and direct that, and, and change the direction or the, the purpose for that tax. I don't believe that. That's my opinion, as I sit here today without having research at issue at all. I don't think that a UCC filing is gonna be able to come in and rewrite an issue of a tax question that went to the voters and the voters vote on. That, that's my personal opinion. It's historically that it goes that way. Now, you've kinda got, but then when we come to the debts and obligations of the county, well, the taxes cover that, right? In theory, so it is kind of a mixed bag. I just don't believe that the UCC filing has the power or the authority to rewrite or redirect that tax from the, from the voice of the people.
Well, I bought it, Tony told you to say it.
So if at some point.
Same thing you said just said.
Okay, which sounds like a smart guy.
If at some point the board of county commissioners decide that they're not gonna, they're not going to make the payment, and they default, that quarter cent, does it, does it, does it come in and get taken by the bank automatically?
My position is they can't.
They can't take it, Tim.
But, but that's, that's where I'm at, is there's a, it's mortgage.
Tim.
I mean, there's a mortgage.
County commissioners signed.
And we have contractual agreement. That's my question, is we have contracts.
I think it would go, I think.
And back to Randy, and back to Randy, what he just said is that we've already, we've already set precedents, so do they come and get it? I mean, I agree that we've gotta continue to do what we're doing and make the payment and continue to, to fulfill our obligation. But if something happens in three, four, five years down the road, the county loses, and, and like Randy said, we don't have the money to fight that. So if they come in, they take that quarter and a half, I mean, it cripples, it cripples the operation.
He just said that.
It does not trump, it does not trump the battle.
Also said that at that time, it'll be challenged.
Which will take two or three years.
Whatever it takes.
And it's tied up for that period.
What I'm saying is, is for you to try to clear that up or anybody else, it's gonna take several hundred thousand dollars to litigate it. And you're still gonna have a long-term timeframe, and you may not win. I've asked this question over and over again to attorneys that I've hired privately to, to give us opinions on this. And they've told me the same thing, that if you've got the money to fight it, you can go after it. But we don't have the money to fight it, nor the time. What we do have is, is the, the need to meet our obligations.
So I don't think anybody's arguing that. My, my problem is, I'm just, is I'm trying to make sure that the, the voters of Haskell County on that quarter cent is taken care of at the end of the day.
Tim.
And I, and I agree.
Like I said before, and I'm glad our DA's here, it's my understanding, I, I could go put a, a lien on everything Rick Bumper owns. And he could do the same to me. But if I wasn't trying to take it, I wouldn't get very far.
So we would.
I could put a labor lien on anybody's place.
As long as y'all say it's okay, I mean, and we're not gonna lose it.
Do you really think I would wind up with anything?
No.
I don't either.
And I've referenced some of those, you know, the bankruptcy and foreclosure filings that we have. And half of them, they'll list our interest in there, and half of them, they don't. And I never really worry about it because we have statutory language anyway, that, that protects that interest, so like, you know.
But I'm just glad to know that we can legally budget that quarter percent.
Yes.
And I hope we always worded quarter percent, not three quarters, because the half's already there. So we're just talking about a quarter.
And we're utilizing that quarter cent.
I understand that, Tim, but.
We're, I mean, we're utilizing it right now.
All we talked about, we just think talking about the quarter.
The thing is, is that I don't think a lot of people realize that if we are utilizing a quarter cent, the jail is pretty much getting that quarter cent either through a shortfall with a half cent to, to live up to their obligations and the payment and/or to maintain and operate the facility. That, that quarter cent is spent. The thing is, is that now we're coming up against a timeframe. Whereas if we don't start taking that quarter cent and addressing the junior loan and start getting it paid for, then we're not gonna have the money to do that. Therefore, that's gonna take a, a real hit out of that quarter cent income to operate the jail because it is consuming all of it right now.
But.
But we've got to make, we, we've got to start accounting and acknowledging and, and making payment on that junior bond because it's come due first. And when it comes due, we're gonna have to have the money. It, it's not in fairness to, to the people of this county for us not to start taking steps now to meet our obligations that we've already made.
Randy, I couldn't agree with you more. And I've given a lot of thought, and I believe when we set the budget, I believe there's things we can do to get there. Now that he's told us it's legal to put that quarter percent in there in the budget. I believe there are some steps we can take to be prepared for that payment.
We've got a legal obligation also around the county.
And I think we can.
Well, we'll, we'll do all we can do.
I mean, I, I think we can.
It's not gonna be easy, Clark, for sure. Everybody's aware of that, and.
But there are a few things that I've thought, I mean, that we can do, that it, it might work out.
This year has been a better year than what we thought we would end up with. So, and I know that's one step. We just have to look forward, and we do have to pay our debts. And when our budget comes up in the next, starting this next month, then that's something that we need to make sure that is budgeted in there this time.
I believe there's a chance we can do it. We'll see when we set the budget. But I do, I'm, I do agree with Randy on this one issue. We are gonna start setting some money back to get, to get prepared for that payment. And even if you put the quarter percent in there, there's still some other things you can do to relieve from taking it all, taking the whole quarter percent out and spending it all. So you would have some carryover to be prepared to pay that general loan. Chuck, we do thank you for your time.
No problem. And I'll.
Thank you for the information.
I'll stick around for a little bit, but hopefully there's no more questions.
On item ten, are we going to, you're gonna get with Mr. Orbison? And you guys get that, or you wanna mark that up and I get it back to Mr. Orbison? What do you want?
I will, if it's all right, I'll take the copy and mark it up. And then I will contact Ms. Orbison as I'm doing it, but we played phone tag last week. And then try to get to, to you in the next step. Does it go back to you who needs to get it back?
Just come back to the board commissioners and then they'll bring it back to the meeting.
Did you email it to me last week?
I emailed.
You emailed.
I gave it to you too.
All right, well, I, I don't need to hang on to this one, because I'll need the, the word document anyway. But I will, I'll mark it up with, with the changes we talked about as far as not pledging that quarter cent directly to the trust. And then you guys can take care of it through your budget and the general, and I should.
Can we table it until next Monday? I think you'll have it done by then.
We can table it again if he doesn't. So you're gonna just table it out of number ten?
Go ahead, well.
If I make a motion, we table it.
Yeah, say, put it for next Monday, don't let me, I don't want.
Well, then if something happens.
If not, we can do it again.
We just table it again.
Yeah, but I'll try to get it done.
Sandra made a motion to table, excuse me, out of number ten, and I'll second it.
Sandra's acting.
Yes.
False story.
Yes.
Department three.
Okay, that clock's five minutes fast, so I'm sure it's ten forty-five. So now, item number nine, will be discussed, considered opening bids from the curtain fire department for fire personnel protective equipment. And that is five minutes fast, so we have, we only have one bid. Shouldn't take long. I'm getting seventeen pants, spenders, seventeen coats, all this is seventeen boots, gloves, goggles, helmets with ear and neck detectors.
And this is all for one, one department?
Curtain fire department. I'll pass this around a look, but just the total bid is nineteen thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars. It's there, it's just broke down right there.
You hear the chief?
Mm-hmm.
Do you think there was some savings by compiling all that together versus individual seats?
I, I don't know. I didn't ask. I would think that they would give you a better deal, don't it? This wasn't just buying it as you go, you know? I would hope there would be. I was hoping more people would bid. I called five or six different vendors and told them how to get ahold of her, you know, to get the bid documents. I thought there was a guy in Arkansas that was gonna bid it, but I guess he changed his mind.
I guess y'all are just paying for this, aren't you?
Well, no, we're gonna leave, we wanna lease purchase, is what I wanna do. So it don't drain our account down so far, you know, all at one time. And I've already talked to C and B about it once before. And there may be, also, I don't know how this would work, but there may be some of this that I delete off of this too. The boots.
If we, if we accept this today, do you, do you know if you wanna delete something right now?
Well, I'm not a hundred percent sure, Paul. The deal is with the boots. I couldn't get them to, to tell me exactly what kind of boots they were. But come to find out, the boots that we've already got for our structural gear are also rated for wildland. So I don't know that there's necessarily a reason to have two pairs that are kind of the same thing, you know, I'm getting at. And that's almost seven thousand dollars of this, I think, was boots. Or did he not? Where are they at? Okay, four thousand dollars of it was boots alone.
We can make, we can amend that.
I mean, it wouldn't go over this, but I might wanna, I may wanna, after I talk to them and see exactly what they bid.
Well, we can make a motion with.
To reduce this some.
Maybe left out. Well, are you happy with the?
This may be my side.
Yeah. Are you, are you happy with the prices there? I mean, are you, are you comfortable with that? I mean, I don't check out fire equipment, so I mean, I don't.
Well, that's what I was gonna, let's see. Yeah, it's definitely cheaper to buy it this way than it was to just buy a suit at a time.
I guess on item number nine, we can make some type of motion.
So are you happy with it?
Yeah. This is what we wanted.
For seconded on number, on number nine, part first. That the mod- modification that you may change on the.
Yeah, that I may do.
Boots are obviously.
Okay.
Department three.
Yes.
Sandra's acting.
Yes.
False story.
Yes. And like I said, it doesn't matter either way. If you want the boots, get the boots.
Well, we just may not need them, and I hate to spend money that we don't really need to spend. I, because there's always something else that.
I wouldn't need that.
We need to spend it on. Yeah, I can.
Copy, we can make it.
I started saying, can I get a copy of it? Now, what about the lease purchase part of this? Do I need to go talk to him at the bank? At Tracy, okay. And I guess he'll know what to do. He'll have to get ahold of you or something. So nobody know the other banks or interest that are here in town?
They might be. You can ask them.
Well, she cares, or he talks to them.
Talked to Mike, and Mike didn't give a vote. And Bradley, rising number farmer state, I don't remember what the speaker sent me an email.
Yeah, I'd like to have a copy of that.
We'd like to have that. You just had, Karen, this is a meeting, she can make you a copy, but she'll have to have it. That's fine, just talk to Tracy, we can figure out what you wanna do.
I talked to him once before, and he said it wouldn't be no problem just when you got ready to come seeing. He's gotta kinda have to bid the interest or something for y'all, isn't he?
She'll give you.
Okay.
She'll give a quote, but, all right, then.
Okay.
Sounds like you're gonna get your stuff.
We need it.
Well, we think for all you do, all the fine departments. Okay, moving on to item number eleven, will be discussed, considered, signed, resolution, amendment, live broadband extending its expiration date of cable television permit.
And basically what this is, before they can put anything on the property, they have to get it approved by the county, which it does go to the DA's office and O S U extension. And this is just the lines or anything they come on and do, they, and this is a yearly, and this was done, Kenny Short signed it last time. And it was done in two thousand and seven. So I'd like to say, been working on the phones, and he had emailed me this just to, to get it approved. And I make a motion that we accept this and continue it.
And I'll second it. It's the same thing we've had.
Same thing we had, and there is a copy just that they signed last time on the back also.
Yeah.
We put that with it if anybody has a question.
Sandra's acting.
Yes.
False story.
Yes.
Department three.
Okay, item number twelve, be signed, approval place, transfer of property, check your fee, big O's.